Bye, Councilor Neary, thank you. Discussion, and none of us in favor, opposed, motion carried. November 2nd, 2015, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Sorry, Mr. McCray.
Sorry, Your Worship, we were unable to hear the last mover and seconder.
Uh, Counselor Kolkoff. No, 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 I think the next one is Counselor Neary. Yeah. Great, now where am I? Did it get moved and seconded? Okay, we're good. Mover and seconder for Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Counselor Swain, thank you, second. Counselor Kolkoff. Discussion, and none of us in favor, opposed, motion carried. Um, next item, um, presentations tonight, uh, Mr. Gordon Anderson is here, uh, Fire Commissioner, and I'd also call out, already here, Chief Whipps. Today we welcome the, the Fire Department members and their families, uh, as well as Fire Chief Whipps and Fire Commissioner Gordon Anderson. Tonight formally recognize the members of the department who have achieved anniversaries for length of service. Uh, we're all within the community, we can all hear the siren go off. The, the reality is, is that you guys are the people that show up when that siren goes. Um, when it comes to the standpoint of community effort, you're there Thursday nights, you're there other days as well, in addition to the callouts, and certainly on behalf of Lansville Council, myself, the residents of Lansville, I'd like to thank you for your efforts on behalf of the community. In addition, you guys also contribute with regards to the, the social aspect of, of the community as well, so participation in Mind Town Day, the bonfire and the fireworks, as well as the food collection drive, uh, in December. So, we truly appreciate the contributions that you made to the community, uh, you're an integral part of the community, and with respect to the, to the long time of service, it reflects on the dedication that you, as individuals, put forward on our behalf. So, thank you very much for that. Um, first off, I'd like to recognize the firefighters for their fire service anniversary, and I'd like to call five firefighters who've achieved five years of service with the department, uh, to come up to the front here. Paul Boward, Chris Crum, Jordan Gale, Peter John, Chris Knutson, Jeff Manning, and Boyer Knapp. How's it going? Good. So, on behalf of the district, I'd like to thank you for your efforts. Chris?
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Carl's still trying to figure out the camera. Sorry, Carl. Um, next is Sean Wylie. Is Sean here tonight? Sean is. No. Um, Sean served with the department for ten years, and with respect to that, our thanks go out to him as well, so we make sure that, uh, his makes it to him. Next, I'd like to call out Ian Munman. I saw you downstairs. Oh, there he is, up in the hall. Uh, Ian served fifteen years with the volunteer department, and I wanted to present you with a certificate of appreciation, as well as a gift from the district. Now, I'd like to call on Fire Commissioner Gordon Anderson to present the twenty-year federal exemplary service medals and certificates, um, and also on behalf of the district, um, also present a certificate of appreciation and a gift, and so if Judy can finish carving those up. If I can call out Glenn Dickinson.
So, it's a, it's a great pleasure to be invited up to these ceremonies, I mean, obviously a recognition of twenty years' service is a very significant milestone, and I want to make sure that we have a chance to honor all of our firefighters here who put so significant service in. So, on behalf of the, uh, government, I'd like to present, uh, some of these medals, and first of all, to Captain Glenn Dickinson, I thank the, uh, Mayor and Chief for a little bit of history in each person, as I, obviously, I don't know them in person, but, uh, Captain Dickinson has joined the Lansville Fire Department at sixteen, is a junior member in nineteen eighty-one, stepped out of the Lansville Department between, uh, January eighty-nine, but returned in March of two thousand and two. Since returning, uh, he went up through the ranks very quickly, through lieutenant to captain, and he's also served as the department's training officer, I can certainly relate to that, having a few years in that role, and it's a very challenging one. So, on behalf of the government, I would like to present you with your twenty-year fire service exemplary service medal, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, twenty.
Thank you very much.
More stuff.
Oh, more stuff.
The federal certificate.
Okay, thank you very much.
As well as a twenty-year service certificate from the District of Lansville, and a gift on behalf.
Thank you, appreciate it, thanks.
So, firefighter Martin Cortez, also recognizing twenty years of service, joining Lansville in March of nineteen ninety-four. Uh, Martin Neary, constable with the RCP, correct?
Yes.
So, we have something else in common, I served seventeen years in the police force as well as my time as a firefighter, and I can certainly relate to the split personality involved in this. And the desire to do two jobs at once is, uh, is not something everybody does, but it's a real pleasure to meet a, a fellow aficionado of that. Uh, apart from that, he's also a licensed paramedic, and he's previously held the rank of lieutenant within Lansville Fire, and serves as a firefighter and a medical first responder, and, uh, I've been told his perfect uniform will be a police-fire insignia, and I can certainly appreciate that, so on behalf of the government, twenty years of service, thank you very much.
On behalf of the, the federal certificate? Certificate from the District of Lansville? You've gotten older over the last twenty years, Martin, but I really appreciate that.
Thank you very much. So, Deputy Chief John Marmont, am I pronouncing that properly? Marmont? Sorry. Um, so, Deputy Chief has also been recognized for twenty years' service. He had nine years with the British military before joining the London Fire Brigade, so that's quite a, uh, quite a career he's had so far, to say the least. Sixteen years as a London firefighter before retiring as a Fire Department engineer and coming to Canada. Joined Lansville, uh, in nineteen ninety-four in May, rising to the rank of Deputy Chief in two thousand and three, and for many years serving as the training officer, and, uh, obviously, again, I can relate to that role in, uh, in a big way, and I know what a obvious commitment you've had to the fire service, not only here in Canada, but obviously over in England as well. Uh, it's a real distinct pleasure to be able to award you your twenty-year fire service medal on behalf of the government, congratulations, Chief.
Certificate on behalf of Lansville? Thank you very much, John. Don Bane here.
So, another, uh, another pleasure, firefighter Don Bane, thirty years of service, that's an, that's an incredible amount of time to put into any one piece of service, and doing it in the public service obviously makes a huge difference. He joined Lansville in January of eighty-seven, and prior to this, serving with the community of Northfield, which is now Denaimo, as mostly local people will know, uh, three, with three years as a firefighter there. He had a brief few years leave of absence, and has since had twenty-eight years with the Lansville Fire Department and community. Uh, he overall has thirty years of fire service, which obviously is very significant. He briefly served as a lieutenant at one time, and then continued on as a firefighter. Uh, obviously, he has a lot of extra duties that he's put in over those thirty years. Uh, I would like to have the honor of presenting you with the recognition of that, in this case, he already has, as you can see, his decoration for the twenty years' service, this is now the ten-year bar that signifies a total of thirty years' service, so congratulations.
Next one's, uh, Fire Chief Tom Wood.
I get one more honor here before I get to relinquish the stage. Chief Whipps has got thirty-five years of service. We don't see a lot of people reaching this, this milestone in the fire service, uh, typically we see it with, with a volunteer service more than we see it in the career fire departments. Uh, I think that speaks volumes of the fact that somebody puts that amount of time in on a voluntary basis, and does it for the, for the sake of their community, it's not for a paycheck, it's just to be there for their community in all times. So, you know, Chief Whipps, he had a little bit of his history, of course, we can't do without that, started in March of nineteen eighty, he's served continuously since that time, he's held every position with the exception of training officer, and I'm sure you don't regret that. He, uh, he became Deputy Chief in nineteen ninety-eight, and chief since two thousand and three, so a very significant period of time in the role of, of Fire Chief, which is a very daunting position. Uh, it says he also holds a dubious credit of, uh, having handed the purchase of every piece of apparatus in the department, as well as a few others. So, I'm sure you're willing to turn the reins over to somebody, somebody else for that.
That's where I got my gray.
I consider that gray, I consider it light. So, Chief Whipps, on behalf of the government, uh, we should present you the, uh, bar to your decoration, this represents, uh, yet another ten years on top of the twenty-five years at the time, so he'll be able to add this to his, uh, collection, thanks very much.
On behalf of the district, a, a certificate of appreciation, gift, and thirty-five years represents probably a token, and also your thirty-five years' service. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you all for, uh, attending tonight, this recognition means a lot to me, and it means a lot to me to be sure my members get it too, because, uh, the job they do, and, uh, so often volunteers are overlooked, and, um, these people go above and beyond, and I'd like to say thank you to all of them. You know, I think in terms of the collective experience, and just in that group, and, and I did make a bit of a comment to, to Martin there, um, thinking back to when I first met him years ago, he was a lot younger then, I was a lot younger then.
We had hair.
Some things never change, Martin. And, and like I said, when the siren goes off, um, I admit, it's one of those things where you stop and you think, okay, what is it today, and it's, whether it's, uh, you know, a Sunday afternoon, or early in the morning, that sort of an aspect, um, every time that siren goes off, there's a variety of pagers that go off, and a variety of individuals that get out and go to the hall, not knowing what they're gonna face, and so in that respect there, um, my hat's off to you, because from our, our standpoint, it's something that a lot of us either A, couldn't do, or wouldn't do, so the fact you're willing to step up is, is greatly appreciated, so thank you to you all for all the efforts that you've made. Part of the tradition is emptying out after this. I think we should move it to the end of the meeting next time, what do you think?
I definitely appreciate that, I really don't.
It's not about them, it's about.
Okay.
Well, I said collectively, like, Martin, Martin used to hang out at the hall with Kevin Daddie, and they'd sit there just waiting to hear that siren go off, and it's just, and he is, he's, he's ambulance, he's, uh, he's, uh, police, fire.
It's amazing when you think that, you know, when you look at twenty-five years, thirty-five years, there's a fair, there's a fair lot of experience that we're going to lose.
Well, not to mention Ken Spence, fifty-plus, so, but, when it comes to, you know, we used to.
It's a story everywhere you go, but, I mean, in an instance.
When I go with may chairs.
With, with Martin, I admit, we used to kind of make a bit of fun of him, because he was at the hall all the time, but if I ever had an incident, he's one of the guys I'd wanna show up, cause he knows his stuff, so. Okay. Uh, next item, uh, 4B, Mr. Brian Blood, regarding the Lansville Historical Society, request for district assistance for archival storage and workspace.
Glenn Rebar, society president, would like to actually begin the delegation.
Good.
You ever been able to stand? Like, you're always stood in my little corner. I like this. Uh, we seem to be here a lot lately, like, this is our third, um, request in a year, and so far, nothing's happened, but tonight I'm here to formally request that we get to use the basement of the Old Town Church for our archives. The archives are not ours, they are community archives, and they should be accessible by the community. It's kind of sitting in that powder cabinet, and that's all, surrounded by God only knows how much stuff, they are hidden. So, we need space, and I said we've been asking for a year now, and the last meeting we had was out, last February, we all agreed that time is of the essence, we can't move ahead without it. Any questions?
Counselor Ian.
Um, you're looking for permanent space, if I remember correctly.
Permanent space, yes.
Okay, and do you need all of the basement, or half of the basement?
Um, we could get away without the whole basement, but apparently, if we divide the basement, it runs into fire regulations. So, it has to be basically, well, where they are now.
So, sort of a secure area?
And it has to be secure, yes.
Counselor Gizmer.
Um, yeah, so I understand you have been talking with the Seaside Community Society, is that correct?
Very little, because when we initially talked to the Seaside Society, it should've been five years ago, we did not get a good response.
You've talked to the newly constituted Seaside Community Society?
Yes, this morning.
And you're finding that experience, uh, much more enjoyable?
Yes.
Very good.
Any further comments or questions from the council? Counselor Swain.
So, just so I'm perfectly clear, and it's clearly you want the entire basement.
Um, the large room in the basement, the kitchen and washrooms are separate, and can be divided off, so they, or are divided off, so they can be used by anybody using the rest of the hall.
Counselor Neary?
Yes, thank you. Could you tell me, please, uh, give me some information about what currently is the status of the archives, where are they kept, if you want to centralize?
In the storage room, and they finally have.
So, all of them are in, in the storage room here?
No, that filing cabinet is closed.
Okay.
We need another one desperately, we've got nowhere to put it. We have stuff around our houses, like, I move this great stack of stuff every time I have to have a family dinner, it's just sitting in my dining room.
Okay, and do you need special conditions in which to keep those kind of archives? Is it preferable, or is it necessary?
Uh, because it's paper and photographs, they have to be relatively dry, which the basement qualifies. It has to be secure so we can leave them out, because, you know, you, as volunteers, you can't commit spending eight hours a day cleaning up.
And if, one final supplementary, if you don't mind, are the archives, are the archives currently sorted and filed, or is that the process that the Historical Society is going through?
That is, well, they were at one time filed, but they've got messed up over the years, partly because we made the mistake of hiring somebody who was not competent, probably fifteen years ago, to write a book for us, and after a very short period of time, we hired him.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kolkoff.
Um, I'm not sure, maybe hanging to you, or through to staff, or, what's in the room now?
Basement room?
The room that you want to use?
Churches.
So, is there much in there, like, physically things in there, or is it used?
Few tables and chairs.
Okay.
Or it was that last time I was down there, which was a long time ago.
Follow-up, um, so what are the implications, and then I get it all, was it goes through to staff, or to somebody else, uh, the implications of displacing the, those church activities?
Well, as, as it stands, right now, there is a, a lease with the district through the Seaside Society, and who then takes the responsibility regarding the church itself, um, what the impact of that would be, would be dependent upon them.
That lease expires December 31st.
Counselor Ian.
Um, is the Historical Society offering to pay rent for this space?
We essentially cannot afford to pay a regular rent, we can afford to do the work that we need to do, you know, new filing cabinet, that kind of stuff, but a regular rent is beyond us, however, if you look around the province, you'll find that there is a heavy precedent for archives, we own by a nonprofit society, financed by the local government, because they are community archives, we do have stuff in there that's in improvement district archives.
Counselor Kolkoff?
Uh, personally, I strongly support this request, and I don't know what the process would be if the current lease hasn't expired, or current renegotiation's underway, et cetera, maybe through, uh, there, Ian, to staff?
Um, through Your Worship, all I can say at this time is that, um, the district, as being the property owner, allows Seaside to control the activities that go on in the building through a lease. There's a subsection in the clause that talks about, uh, subleasing and, uh, other forms of, uh, stepping away from the lease agreement. Uh, that does not preclude the Seaside Society from renting out or allowing to use, that's within the pur views of the contract, uh, the only thing they can't do is to sublease or, uh, something.
Counselor Gizmer.
Um, this is to staff again, I, I understand that, um, the Seaside Community Society may be making, uh, a, coming as a delegation and making a report to staff and the council to deal with the expiring lease that's coming up at the end of this year, and may be coming forward with recommendations as to the use of, uh, of the, of the, uh, heritage church property, uh, and that may help clear up, uh, for council what, uh, they plan to do, and who they plan to rent to, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, Counselor Holson.
So, I guess this is part of question through to staff, and part of question through to Sirive. I believe it was in February when you were last here, there was a motion made by council through to staff to explore options for storage, um, of the archives, I don't recall also if there was a subset of that to look for a display location as well, so I don't recall if Tom had. So, we have that outstanding motion too, which, one, you know, could we get a status update on that, and two, with this request tonight supersede that, you, you formally are requesting that particular space?
The request in February was for, uh, storage and workspace, which is what Grace Doerr asked me for tonight, but now we come with a specific.
Target.
A specific spot.
Okay. So, then the first part of that through to staff, is there any update we can get on work done to date from that prior motion?
At this time, Your Worship, I cannot respond to all, I can indicate is that there was a motion before, um, on third and fourth of February, a request for assistance to secure work storage, to which the motion was, um, moved by Counselor Savage and seconded by Counselor Millbank, the council request staff to prepare a report on options for providing work and storage space for the Lansville Historical Society and municipal facilities, uh, including reports on other alternatives, um, et cetera, including input from the Seaside Community on space at Coston Hall.
Yeah, sorry, I was asking, what, what was the update on that? Certainly, we did get, uh, cost estimates for rental from, you know, in another location, uh, we reviewed, uh, availability here, which is non-existent, and we talked to representatives of the society about space and potential for, um, sharing office at Coston Hall, and there's already the space in the basement of Coston Hall where your museum items are, are kept, um, so that's, it was going forward in the works, sort of timed with lease information.
Okay. Counselor Kolkoff, then Counselor Swain.
Uh, through Your Worship, to staff, the, uh, contract expires December 31st, ask for.
Through Your Worship, one part regarding the church completes in December twenty fifteen, the second part of the lease for Coston Hall is twenty seventeen.
Okay, and for the first part, will it be, will that come back to council?
Uh, any, any document of, uh, in the lease agreements, et cetera, are required to come back for this.
Counselor Swain.
Uh, good, uh, mission, um, my question is, is at the end of the sorting and doing the work, is the intent to display these items to the community, and have it open to the community on a regular basis?
Possibly, because I do get phone calls, people walking to this information and that information, right, so they're accessible. You can have speed migraine, well, I can tell them, but otherwise, no, so we need it to be accessible, so students are one group that frequently come in, draw to me, and right now, it's useless, we can't help them.
Anything further from council? Um, you mentioned Brian, is Brian, do you have anything to ask?
Well, I, I just like to address the projects we're working on to give council some idea of the value of the community, of what we're planning on doing. Um, we've, a number of years ago, we published the volume one of the history of Lansville the first hundred years, and so there's three projects currently that we need to be working space to work on, one is to research and write the second volume up to the end of the improvement district era, we believe municipality, we see that as current events, and that's for future generation, um, so, and we would like to, uh, we have a, we have a number of electronic items, our scanner, computer, uh, we need, uh, place to work with those in order to, to, uh, scan and create an online archive with our archival material, we've done that a little bit. We've done that a little bit with our website. We posted the Chambers Diary and a number of other historical things that we've written subsequent to the Lanceville history itself. And we have selected a substantial collection of physical artifacts from the mining and the farming era, particular, and we would like to photograph and scan those and have what was, would be kind of a virtual museum. And if the district sees a change in the use of the building itself, we would be amenable to creating a quasi-museum in lots of display cases on the main floor, if that main floor is going to be used for other than simply the church that's there now, and including some law photographs of Lanceville history for the walls. So, we really need a workspace that is dedicated to be able to follow through with those things. And I'd just like to say that we have, when we have a few projects in the past, we have always followed through with them, so that's all.
Thank you. Okay. So, anything further from council? Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation there. Okay. Next item under correspondence, some correspondence from the RDN regarding the Southern Community Sewered Local Service Area Amendment, and with respect to it, there's a request there that we consent to adopting the local service amendment, Bala 888.06, 2015. Council? Looking at this going, what is this?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Colclough, seconded by Counselor Hane. Discussion. Counselor Neary?
Thank you, your worship. Through the chair to staff, I have a question, clarification, or perhaps it's even to our present representative at the RDN, I don't know. Is this a housekeeping item, basically?
Through your worship, with our discussions that we literally had, yours must have been burning, we were discussing whether this is a housekeeping.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hane?
Well, that's what I was going to say, basically, every time they add another property to these areas, we have to do an amendment. So, there's no additional cost to us, is there, for changing it?
Basically, what it is, is they've just realigned some of the fees there, different, same taxpayer, different pot of money effectively. And so, by changing some of the other fees, what it did is that if this amendment didn't pass, it would result in double charging, effectively, which is why the housekeeping side appears.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Hearing none, all is in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Verbal updates. Counselor Swain?
Well, I wasn't going to bore everybody to death with the details of the firefighters for a term, but since it's left, I won't bore everyone. So, I did attend the last one on the 28th, and there's really, there's just too many things on the agenda, and one had to do with facility upgrades within Park and Rec, and really what it had to do was inter-dC against the lighting, the exchange gear, smacking the stuff, so it was kind of a form of, I don't know how that really applies to our district, but. And then their second item that was on the agenda had to do with the Heatherwood Youth Park, and of interest here was they are going to be putting in a big skate park, as well as a punk track, which has to do with what was occurring in Lanceville, doing the bike track with our roller park. But other than that, I'm still waiting on finding out what the final appointment statuses for the district of Lanceville is. Anyways, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Counselor Hane?
I have a report.
Counselor Colclough?
Through your worship.
Counselor Neary?
Thank you, your worship. I apologize in advance because I am remiss in not bringing my Parks and Rec Commission report with me. I submitted it a month, a week too early, and in the interim, I've kind of filed it away and forgotten that I need to bring it here. But very briefly, I'll give you a verbal update. We met a few weeks ago, and we received a report back from the organizers of the Mindtown Days. Apparently, it was a raging success, as is the norm, I think, in Lanceville. Apparently, there was some teething problems with the electrical, the new electrical hookups, which caused a few problems initially, but they were resolved quite happily. I think there'll be some reorganization next year to take into account that. And apparently, there was some confusion amongst volunteers, but I think that was down to the fact that there was a large contingent of new volunteers who stepped up, and it was recognized that there was some communication issues, and maybe, you know, next year, it will be different because people will have more experience, having done the event before. On the rotary park, unfortunately, we did not receive any responses to our request for, it was an RFP, am I correct, that was sent out for the track, the bike track. Apparently, there is one supplier who might be interested, but is unable to put a quote in because of time constraints. So, I think staff have undertaken to have a conversation with that particular supplier, with the view to seeing whether that can be, you know, arranged at a different time. But apparently, there was very little interest expressed, which is disappointing. There was a decision made that the play equipment will be aimed at the preschool, two-and-a-half to five-year-old group, because that seems to be the grouping that is taking advantage of that part of the play area more than any other. And there was one other item that was significant, and I can't recall what that was, I apologize. We are in the process of recruiting three volunteers to the commission. If there's anybody out there who's interested, please let people know. We've had some applicants, and we are looking to fill three positions, but we have not been successful in filling them all yet. Two are current, one is anticipated at the end of the year. So, we are hoping to have those positions filled by the end of the year, and I will report back on that, hopefully in December, with some positive news.
Thank you. Counselor Neary?
Counselor Coulson?
Little factoid, the Canadian Federation of Independent Business released their Municipal Spending Watch report, a report a few days ago, and based on their metrics, Lanceville ranked 149th out of 152 municipalities in B.C. I hope, I offer that as something I hope we can address in some fashion during our upcoming budget session.
Okay, so a big number was a bad thing, or a good thing?
We were, 149th out of 152, so that's bad. We were in the bottom.
It's just in some cases, like the top spender is number one?
Oh, I see. We were the 10 worst.
Okay.
They had two metrics, but where we really got creamed is our operating spending per capita is, in my opinion, reasonable compared to the other bad municipalities. But the other metric they used is the percentage increase in operating spending over a 10-year period. And because our population has been slightly declining over 10 years, basically, our spending has gone two-and-a-half times over that period. So, that heavily influenced our ranking.
Okay. Counselor Gezaber?
Nothing of interest.
Thank you very much. And for me, I'll speak at 7B about the Ministry of Forests, so that'll be my update. Next item, item 7A, Strategic Planning Workshop, RFQ, and there's some reports there from staff, some information, some quotes, et cetera. Where would council like to go on this? Counselor Gezaber?
What does staff recommend? Which one of the?
People named insert consultant, according to the staff recommendation. So, basically, they're recommending that we appoint one of them.
If I may, your worship, council is very clear on what they wanted to see the general parameters. They support a piece of a governance workshop, a couple of major strategic planning. So, staff went out as consultants and gave them vague parameters for that. These four consultants have returned with what they believe they can provide to you. That is essentially what staff and the stock has been handling on this.
Counselor Hane?
So, I went through all of them. I've done a little bit of research, gone on their websites. I personally like Gordon MacIntosh. He also provided the LGMA leadership. He was one of the speakers in Parksville in January, I think we went. He was very good. I think some of the information Counselor Coulson has on his website is actually from him. So, I just thought, bang for the buck, his rate was pretty reasonable, they were all expensive to me, $4,900 for two-and-a-quarter days. You know, I thought it was, I guess, fair, and it also gave us enough time to cover the topics, I thought, fairly well, so we'd get a little bit of better coverage on both sides. So, I prefer Dr. MacIntosh.
Excuse me, doctor?
He's a doctor, he's PhD.
Counselor Gezaber?
I mixed up the report at the end of that, so I wanted to appoint Jeanne Beauchamp as a facilitator. She's our new financial director, so I'll forget that, and I'll be guided by others.
Counselor Neary?
Thank you, your worship. I move that council directs staff retain the services of LGL to provide a strategic planning workshop with the governance component. If I can hear a second of it, I will speak to that.
And by LGL, you mean?
LGL Institute, Gordon A. MacIntosh. Seconded by?
Counselor Hane?
That's your job, isn't it, not mine?
That's okay.
I would agree with the previous speaker. Of the four possibilities that were presented to me, this stood out in terms of the structure and the level of information that was presented as part of the application. My second choice was actually Beauchamp.
Rec. No relation.
But certainly, for me, this was a number-one choice. It fits the criteria that was laid out by council. It provides a really clear breakdown of what will be covered, and I think it fits our needs.
Counselor Hane?
I agree with all that. I think this was a good choice. I'd also ask that this strategic planning session be open to the public, just like the?
That's separate.
I know. Just like the previous strategic planning session, which went very well. So, I'm going to be making a motion that, I'm going to do that.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor with the Register of Opinion Services of Gordon MacIntosh, LGL Institute. Any further counsel input? Hearing none, all is in favor? Okay. Sorry, counsel?
Just for the cost, it was $4,900 for the facilitation part, and then he's got an extra $1,100 bucks for the document preparation, so it'd be about six grand for that one versus?
I think that's optional.
I think the other one, sorry?
I think it might be optional, though.
Well, okay, I'll actually ask that question.
Yes, good question.
Usually, well, I say usually, the one year I was involved in this, we did have a report for the strategic plan prepared by the consultant. Would I assume we were following a similar model this time?
That was a question. To staff?
I guess that question rolls right back to council, that they wish to receive it. They wish to have staff do that report. The only thing, I caution, that staff are participating in the process, and that it will be very difficult for staff to participate and also prepare the report. So, if I'm the asking, I think it's best that the consultant prepares the reports. They are the facilitator and the moderator and the non-investor person.
Typically, it rolls quite heavily into the annual reports we're required to submit.
Yeah. Okay. Anything further? Hearing none, all is in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Counselor Hane?
I move that the strategic planning session be open to the public.
Seconded by Counselor Neary. Discussion?
Just speaking to that, I think Lanceville, since the last election in November, has been taking a path of open transparency and accountability, and I'd like to see us carry on that path. I think the residents really appreciate the videotaping now, as we see we're getting good numbers. So, I think, and we even got an email today about it. So, I think we need to keep on that path and let residents know we are willing to be transparent and accountable.
Counselor Coulson?
Yep, support that, and we actually had a couple residents who sat through both days when we did this last time, so I thought that was great. Hope we get a bit more visibility and press on it this time.
Okay. Just coming from my thought, I like the idea of the public, I think it went well before. However, there was still a portion that was in camera, because sometimes there are going to be topics that really should be remaining in camera because of their critical nature and their sensitive nature, et cetera. So, I agree with it being as an overall goal, as much as possible in the public, but very difficult to say everything.
Yeah.
Okay, so, just as kind of a friendly amendment, where possible, where applicable, I'm not really sure how to word it. Mr. McCray?
Through your worship, that would give council the freedom to be able to decide what they believe needs to go in camera and what needs to stay out. So, if council was to make a motion that where applicable, the strategic planning session is to be open to the public.
Who defines where?
Yeah.
Counsel. Okay. Same people that are voting on this motion. I don't know if somebody wants to do a formal amendment to it, or if movement seconded will agree to a friendly amendment?
Actually, could we turn the wording around, where applicable, will go in camera? I don't like the other way around, where we say where applicable, we're public. Where applicable, will go in camera, so then the emphasis is more on public versus in camera.
Okay. Yeah, I understand the reasoning of why that sort of thing. So, taking that sort of a wording, I'd propose an amendment where you've got basically the strategic session to be in public?
And both sessions that are required to be in camera, as directed by council.
Okay.
Sorry, I can hear your?
Yeah, say it again.
Is it amendment to add flying words, and where applicable, will they be closed in public?
Yeah, where directed by council.
Yeah. Okay, so I move that amendment. Seconded by Counselor Colclough. Discussion on the amendment. I just wanted to leave open the possibility that there could be something where we need to go in camera, which would not then violate the main motion. Okay. Okay, anything further on the amendment? Hearing nothing, all is in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Back to the original motion as amended. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Which gets us to the Ministry of Forests, and this was the addition to the agenda. As council's aware, and the public may be aware, council went down last week, I believe it was Tuesday, to meet with Minister Thompson, Ministry of Forests, with respect to Woodlot 1475. Myself, Counselor Neary, Counselor Colclough, and Counselor Gezaber went down to speak to the minister, and we presented him with some history of Woodlot 1475 and concerns that have been raised with respect to the property itself. This was partially as a result of the efforts of the Save Lanceville Forest Group. However, the concerns that we spoke mainly to regarding water and the possible impact of logging in light of climate change, our stage-four restrictions, and also was raised legislation such as the Water Sustainability Act. Questions were also raised with regards to the data and earth science regarding reports that were required in the Woodlot Management Plan. And the question was put to the minister with respect to whether or not there was a possibility of some sort of change in status with respect to the woodlot. The minister's response simply is with regards to the consideration of possible change of ownership of the woodlot. He raised the issue of willing seller, willing buyer, kind of an aspect. However, there were some requests made of the minister with regards to additional information that the minister was going to report back to us on. And in that light, if I could turn it over to Counselor Neary, who's got a motion proposed for council.
Thank you, your worship. I move that council writes to Minister Thompson, thanking him for listening to the concerns of council, and for his commitment to follow up on questions raised during the discussions.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. And speaking to that, I think we went to the minister with a very specific area to discuss. We went off- area to discuss. We went over all the generalities, and we tended to dance around council-specific concerns around water. But Minister Thompson made it quite clear that they really don't know whether there's any data or reports or information. He didn't think so, but he wasn't sure. So I think it's incumbent on us, having asked for the meeting, to acknowledge that we appreciated his meeting with us and listening to us, but also reminding him that he's made commitments to come back with some answers to our questions. And if we can get those responses to our questions, then we will have some basis to move forward, and it will inform our future actions. It could have several implications, but I think we need to stay on this file. If we don't, I think if we don't pursue this file with the ministry, it will just float away into the ether, and we won't hear any more about it, frankly. So I think we need to stay very proactive on this.
Okay. Any further comments, questions? Counselor Colclough.
I just want to add that Minister Thompson was very open to when there was something that he didn't have the information on, or that he wasn't aware of. He was very quick to say, "We'll get that, and we'll get back to it." So I just want to credit him with that. I guess the only other thing I'd like to add to the conversation is not necessarily in this motion, but thanks also to Minister Stillwell, who was instrumental in getting the meeting for us.
Counselor Geselbrecht.
The bad news is that the logging started up in the Woodlot 1475, and there's some urgency to continue negotiations, both with Mr. Gregson and to hear back from the minister. And the good news is that Neil Schwartz advised me today that they have over sixteen-hundred signatures and climbing, and a lot of interest, not just Lansville, but Parksville and Nanaimo residents who love coming to Lansville and using the surrounding area. So, you know, tourism, future. This is a big deal. And so I want to personally thank the mayor, as well as the other council members who came down to Victoria. And I would classify it as a positive visit, and I like this motion, that let's get some answers for those reports, which were supposed to be part of the original management plan back in 2005. And so the minister's looking into that. And as well, the other crucial point in my mind was that there is the new Water Sustainability Act, which although is law, has not been proclaimed yet. But that act, as I read, it basically devolves the responsibility, or the province can devolve the responsibility for managing your watersheds and your water down to the municipal level, and give us the opportunity to create a plan on how to preserve the watershed, how to make sure the aquifers are being recharged, which is part of the basic problem we're dealing with here in Lansville. Very crucial. So full marks to the mayor and to the council members who went down there.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. If I could just, as a separate mark, it wasn't related to the motion. You know, it's the first time collectively the new members of the council have gone on something like that. And from my standpoint, it was interesting to see the dynamic, the way that the questions and comments kind of went around the table. It wasn't a case that council members just sat there quietly. Bob, Counselor Colclough, you mentioned about the topography itself in that respect. Counselor Geselbrecht, the only way I can describe it is you put kind of your prosecutor-type approach to it with regards to asking questions, but in a good way.
Boy, you liar. Shut up!
It was in a good way, and so that was really nice. And then Counselor Miri, making sure that we are on point with respect to things. So I thought it was, regardless of the outcome, I thought it was a successful meeting and showed a really good dynamic. So thank you to all of you for coming, and Mr. McCray for his support and notes ahead of time with respect.
He drove.
Well, yeah, I had to ride with him, let me tell you. It was kind of different. Hey, like I said, I thought it was positive regardless of outcome, so thank you very much. Moving on to item 9A, council appointments with respect to it. Now, these were brought forward, some of them brought forward from a previous time with respect to it. So the first one listed there are the appointments to the VIRL, the Vancouver Island Regional Library System. I believe currently is it Counselor Geselbrecht? Currently is the representative?
By default.
By default. Regardless, that's why you're here. So this is one that gets appointed annually, so they would be looking for the appointment through December 31st, 2016, for both a representative and an alternate. Counselor Miri.
I nominate Counselor Geselbrecht.
I'm assuming you mean as the main representative?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's the first one there. Do we have a seconder for that? Counselor Hain. Discussion? Counselor Geselbrecht?
We need our libraries.
Silence is golden. Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. We do need an alternate with respect to the library as well.
Who's the alternate right now?
I don't know.
I think it might be me.
So we need a motion for an alternate representative.
I'll nominate Counselor Miri for that.
Oh, that's a little different. Second that? Guess it can happen. Discussion? Counselor Miri or? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Just a question. Should we actually see who's interested in these prior to making motions? And it's like, whoever's interested, please step forward, and everyone steps back other than one?
A while back, I sent out an email kind of looking for interest, and other than Counselor Geselbrecht did reply with respect to kind of the current situation is kind of okay. There wasn't any other response, so I'm taking silence to be lack of interest.
You're out, but?
Silence is golden.
Okay, thank you.
Unless you particularly want it.
No, no.
There you go.
Okay.
moot point.
Was it? Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. The Regional District Nanaimo Board is. Counselor Miri?
I nominate Counselor Colclough.
As the director?
Mm-hmm.
Good. We have a seconder for that?
A second one.
Counselor Swain. Discussion? Counselor Hain.
I'm going to vote against that. I think the mayor's been doing a great job. I think he's been showing great leadership there. And I just think that Counselor Colclough is new to council. He really doesn't have any experience, and I think the time commitment that the mayor's been putting in, he's also the vice chair, which will send a message to the regional board that we don't respect that position. So I'm going to carry on and won't support it.
Counselor Colclough.
I'm going to decline that. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. We've had a motion on the table.
Table that I'll speak to.
With respect to it, when it comes to the aspect of withdrawal of a motion, if the mover and seconder was to withdraw the motion itself, provided there's general consent and nobody opposes it, a motion could be withdrawn.
Well, since the nomination's declined, I have no objection to withdrawing it. It seems redundant, a redundant motion, really, doesn't it?
Counselor Geselbrecht.
I make a motion to-
Hold it. We got a motion on the floor technically right now.
So it's just a withdrawal?
Well, I got to ask whether or not anybody opposes the withdrawal.
Oh, okay.
It's related to the withdrawal.
So there'll be discussion on withdrawal? I was curious if Counselor Colclough is interested in the alternate position, which I think I-
No, we'll kind of-
What I would have to have?
Later. Okay, if nobody opposes the withdrawal, the motion itself is withdrawn. Counselor Geselbrecht?
I'd like to appoint the mayor to continue on in that position.
You have a seconder for that? Counselor Coulson. Discussion. Counselor Coulson.
Yep, no, it's a good one. Will this be your third or fourth term at that gig? Third?
Well, eight years before.
Yeah, so well experienced. You were voted in to be vice chair by the twenty-six or twenty-eight members, whatever it was, so I-
Seventeen, but that's-
I thought it was more than that, sorry. Way to vote. Way to vote, yeah. Yes, I support you as the lead there. And then the alternate, I was going to ask if Counselor Colclough is interested in that position.
Okay. So on the motion itself, anything further? Hearing none, all is in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Counselor Coulson, you wanted to follow up?
Do I have to make the motion first? I move that pursuant to local government act, council appoints. Counselor Colclough is District of Lansville alternate municipal director on the regional district and land board.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Miri. Discussion on that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, no need to withdraw. Okay, anything further? All is in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, appointments to the Parks and Land Commission. Counselor Miri.
Well, I would nominate Counselor Swain, who apparently is already in there for three years.
Yeah, apparently.
Unless it's too onerous, sir.
No, what?
Adjutant.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Colclough. Discussion?
Well, ask him first. Yeah, I'm okay with continuing that appointment.
Okay, so we're just making a motion for the member at this point. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Now we need an alternate member as well. Counselor Miri?
I'll nominate Counselor Miri for that.
Good. Seconded by Counselor Swain. Discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Council liaison to the Seaside Community Society. Should one of us make the motion? Sorry, Counselor Hain.
I move Counselor Coulson as the liaison for the Seaside Community Society.
Seconded by Counselor Miri. Discussion? Oath?
Yeah, I'm good with that. I think we're getting along fairly good, so, yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
No, it's pretty well, so.
All goes in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, 9B, appointment of director of financial services and oath of office. So there's a motion there about Jeanne Beauchamp as director of financial services for the District of Lansville. Counselor Geselbrecht.
I'd like to make that motion, that the council appoints Jeanne Beauchamp as director of financial services for the District of Lansville.
We have a seconder for that. Seconded by Counselor Miri. Discussion. Counselor Coulson.
I'm going to apologize for this. We've never even met, but I can't speak directly as to why I can't support this, because details are in camera. But there are aspects of this contract that I don't support, so I don't want to support this motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. So now we need the swearing, the oath of office.
At this time, I would ask, we appointed Jeanne Victoria Beauchamp to please read the oath of office. This oath of office is established by council by law for officers to swear. I'm going to pay office. I, Jeanne Victoria Beauchamp, am being appointed to the Office of Director of Financial Services for the District of Lansville to hereby promise and swear, while faithfully, honestly, and impartially, with the best of my knowledge and ability, execute the powers, duties, and functions of my office. I will treat all matters and information that comes to my attention as a result of my office and competence. I have not received, nor will I receive or accept any payment or reward, or promise of either, in return for the exercise of my powers, duties, and functions, other than as permitted by the municipality. I will not allow my personal interests to conflict with the duties of my office, and I will comply with all policies and directives of the municipality and comply with all laws. I solemnly affirm your oath and your true character in this moment.
Welcome to the District of Lansville.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, next item, 9C, dealing with the previous notice of motion. Now considering motion, Counselor Coulson.
Whereas on April 13th, 2015, council approved $25,000 into the 2015 financial plan to fund the strategic plan priority action communications. And whereas this strategic plan priority action was one of the top three strategic items identified during the 2015 strategic plan session, and whereas council meetings have been recorded and posted on YouTube since February 2015, a total of 22 posted meetings have received an average of 85 views per meeting and a median number of views of 55. Therefore, we have resolved that. One, council request staff commence recording and posting public meetings with a target commencement date of January 2016 be established. Two, the scope be limited at this time to recording and posting meetings. Live streaming to be postponed at this time until a more detailed assessment of need can be established. And three, a budget of $2,000 be set for this preliminary phase. Further optimization can occur from there if required.
Seconded by Counselor Hain. Discussion. Counselor Coulson?
I don't have a whole lot more to say on it. Kind of the stats speak for themselves, I think. You know, if we consider the median number of views of 55, that's basically a full audience. We're getting that per week. That's pretty impressive. I think this is something that's a good service to residents, and it would be nice if this was done in a more official capacity through the district and posted on their site, perhaps.
Counselor Hain.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm surprised at the number of views. I just, it's amazing how many people are looking at video. This is the way that a lot of municipalities are going. In fact, if you actually check with Parksville Qualicum, Ladysmith are all working on this initiative. So I think the fact that Counselor Coulson took it upon himself and has been doing it, I commend you for doing that, because it is something that everybody's working on. Because I think we're all looking to achieve that higher level of transparency and accountability. And, you know, how can you vote against that? Like, that's what it's all about.
Counselor Geselbrecht.
Do we qualify for CPAC? CPAC-
Get back to you. Counselor Miri.
Thank you, through you, your worship, to staff. I'm wondering about the logistics of this. Timing, we've got so much on our place at the moment. I have no objections to this action. I think it's probably high time that we were doing this, but it's not something that just happens overnight. You know, we don't have the infrastructure in here to accommodate it. I certainly would prefer to see this than independent recordings. I think it's commendable that, you know, someone wants to record and post. I'm not sure that it's always the best way to go about it. So I would certainly prefer to see this happening. But I'm just wondering about, you know, in the scheme of things, with all the things that are on staff's plate at the moment?
Your worship, the best way to describe it is for staff to try and prioritize. I think council is aware that we are very limited in our capacity, some of full time, some of part time, some of recorded time. We try to utilize our time as best we can. We try and do things according to what council provides us on the strategic priority plan, to which this will be started shortly. My recommendation to this is that where this falls in council's priority is something that I don't believe staff quite understand yet on the basis of all the other priorities that exist in front of this council. Requesting us to do this is, I understand that, trying to understand the scope of drilling down to what council wants in regards to whether it is, and I'm just really talking meat and potatoes here, whether it's a microphone and a video camera, that's it, whether we're just recording on a laptop, whether it is a full sound system. The original report indicates that it was, you know, and again, I'll quote it a bit, a bit of a cattle operation on things. It was full stars and stripes. I'm not quite sure from this motion where council wants to be with this, so perhaps if- if staff were to bring a report saying, this is where we think, and this is where we know the point three on the budget of 2,000 you set for preliminary, it becomes a bit difficult speaking from my previous positions that I've done, that designing a system in here, you need to know a few things as to what is your end game on this. Do you just want a microphone? Do you want a video camera that's recording to hard drive? Do you want this set as a full system? Do you want amplifiers? Do you want speakers? What are you looking for as a council? And I think if that's provided to staff, we can get moving on this very quickly.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll leave staff for now.
Okay. Counselor Kolka, then Counselor Coulson, then Counselor Swain.
To you, Counselor Coulson, what did you envision for $2,000?
Not to be sassy, but taking these two plugs and putting them in that computer over there is a bare bones approach. Obviously, that's not quite what we want, but, you know, a camera installed up on the beam there, you can get wireless IP cameras, 200 bucks tops, a boundary microphone, records the room nicely, one microphone, might need to run a cable along the beam and over that way to plug into the computer, but cheap, simple, you know. To me, that should be no more than about a day's work, and that's why I put 2,000 bucks, because I know we might want to increase the caliber than what I have here, but to me, this is working. That camera there was 93 bucks, this microphone was 90 bucks from Costco. It's a boundary microphone, so it records 360 degrees, so if it's placed up on the beam there, we easily capture the sound quite nicely in this room. So we just need a way to, a mechanism to record it, and then get it onto a site, whether that's YouTube, the district website, I hadn't contemplated that, but, you know, I'm looking at bare bones, cheap, just to get it into the, you know, the district's hands and control.
Counselor Coulson was actually next, I don't know if that's what you were intending to say originally.
But that was kind of a question through you to me.
Okay, no, I understand that, but I had you in the speakers list after.
Oh, I see, yeah, that's basically what I was gonna say.
Okay, good. Counselor Swain?
Yeah, so I'm no audiovisual expert, so I'm more comfortable with this going out through an RFQ, to have people actually qualified in this field, and to actually, so we can get this done right, and the sound quality is pristine. I find the videos all the, I do appreciate the effort, I find that sound quality is not great, and it's often hard to, you know, hear speakers, and same thing, just giving that visual on site is not equal. So I think it should go to RFQ, so it's done right, you know, $25,000 has been allocated to it. I'm not concerned about the budget, again, I'm more concerned about it being done right, not mauling around and just getting it done, and see if you get it done.
Counselor Hain?
I'd entertain the RFQ, depending on what it came back at. Two questions, Counselor Coulson, maybe you'd be willing to assist with this, you're quite familiar with how all this works. You could probably provide staff with some assistance to set this up and do the sound, so there's an option there if their time is limited. And two, I hope that you're gonna continue to record until we get this up and running.
Yeah, just to reply to Counselor Swain's comments, you know, there's a few videos where, my former one of these died, and so I was recording with the laptop, microphone or the microphone on the webcam, so those were poor sound, but when this is working right, the sound is quite good, you can even hear speakers at the back, like when we had 100-plus people here for some of those more heavily attended meetings, you could hear everyone just, just fine. You can go up from that. To get someone in that professional, that's where I think our $19,000 tool came from. You know, you start to get individual microphones, bringing it all into a mixing board, speakers, it can really escalate from there. I think Manimal right now has approved a budget of 25 to $125,000 to improve their sound system. So this can really get out of control, and there's working rock bands that don't have that kind of budget for sound gear, I don't think we need that.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Just to clarify, the motion makes reference to recording, you mean audio and video?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Sorry, Counselor Neary?
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to, I'll put it to the test, I'm going to move that we refer this to our strategic planning session, which is coming up very shortly, and then a more thorough discussion, well, if there's a seconder, I'll speak to it.
Seconded by Counselor Swain. Discussion?
I'm in two minds about this, because I support the idea of recording meetings, streaming them if we can, but I am aware that it's, in its simplest form, it can be done, but I think if we're going to do it on an official, on an official basis, and I think we should be doing it on an official basis if we're going to do it at all, rather than on an unofficial basis, I think it probably needs more in-depth discussion and look at what exactly we want and what kind of direction we're going to give to staff on achieving it, if that's what we're going to do. I think it is a priority, how high a priority, I'm not quite sure at this point. Money has been allocated for it, and if we can, you know, maybe as a council, if we can bring something onboard within that target budget, all well and good. But I personally, I'm uncomfortable making a decision on this right this second. I don't want to reject it, because I think it's a worthwhile project, but I'm not willing to commit to it right now, so I'd rather refer it when we can look at it with more, not as terrible a leisure, but, you know, give more in-depth consideration to it.
Counselor Kokla? Sorry, Mr. McCray?
Yes, through your worship, the Director of Financial Services has allowed us to know that if the motion is on the floor that indicates referring, the matter is strategic planning, the discussion about the motion should add at this point, and it should be just a discussion that you refer.
Thank you.
Two time, please.
Counselor Kolka?
I support referring. Can't say anything else.
Just procedurally, it's been referred to the strategic planning meeting? Okay, now, when it comes to that, are decisions made at the strategic planning meeting?
Through your worship, the strategic planning guides staff on listed priorities, which generally moves things in and out, and how much money one wants to allocate towards these things throughout the year.
But when it comes to the strategic planning meeting itself, is a decision made there, or does a report come back and then council then approves the strategic?
That would be subject to how the meeting is posted. If it's posted as a special council meeting, it's within your purview to make a decision.
Okay.
If it's posted as a committee of the whole, which I believe last time it was posted as a special.
Oh, okay.
Then it's up to you whether you wish to then refer it again for a staff report.
Okay, and the reason I ask is, does it sound like you're pushing it to the strategic plan for a decision on it, in some way?
No, not necessarily, if I may. I think, you know, the question will be, to what, you know, what priority will this emerge at? It will probably be folded into a communication plan, I would imagine.
Okay.
So council is going to be making decisions on priorities and goals as a strategic planning process. If that's not the right venue, then fair enough. I'm open...
And now, are you in the strategic?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, because this motion is about making a decision in some way, shape, or form. The strategic planning tends to be broader as opposed to specific items, so that's why I was kind of confused about the aspect of referring to the strategic plan.
Yeah, I understand.
If it was referred to after the strategic plan, that, then it would match up the decision making to...
That's the question.
Okay. Counselor Coulson?
Just further that, this was factored in the last strategic plan session, and it was rolled into a communication policy in January.
Okay. Okay, so right now, we've got a motion to refer it to the strategic planning session. Okay, anything further?
No, I will speak against that then, because it sounds like it's the wrong venue.
Okay. So, from that standpoint, so, okay. You understand what the challenge is?
Yeah.
With regards to the timing of it?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, all is in favor of the motion?
Not to defer.
The motion to refer.
To not refer to the strategic planning session.
Sorry, is the motion to refer?
Yes. That's what the motion was, yeah. Okay, all is in favor of the motion to refer. Opposed? Motion defeated. Do you wish to?
Yes, I move to refer this item, or postpone this item until after the strategic planning process has taken place.
Okay. Do we have a seconder for that? Counselor Kolka? Discussion on that motion?
What can we discuss?
Sorry?
Can we discuss anything if it's a motion to?
Yeah, it's not a table, it's just a refer to pass, so you can, in regards to the time and place aspect of it. Okay. Okay, any further? Counselor Kolka?
Just tell me if this is out of order. What I'm very interested in is what our CEO was talking about is some options, I mean, we're talking $2,000 to $25,000, and, you know, I support this, I just want to make sure we get it right, and then we do it for the least cost.
Okay. Okay. So any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, which gets us to public participation. Name and address for the record, please.
Hollywood, Lakeview, Texas. As a taxpayer of Lansville, I'm very concerned about the budget. We bounce around all the time, and I see dollars hovering around from head to head, and, you know, if left your own device in some of those, it can get out of control. So I would have hoped in this matter, every time recording, what the activity takes place in these meetings, you could have at least tonight made what has been happening for the last number of months official, and then if you deemed it necessary to tweak the system, then you could discuss that at a later date. But right now, this works. The public's happy with it, and I see that if it's left, if I'm scared that the dollars will merit up and merit up in your end, like something that's totally unnecessary, this one works. So leave it alone unless you have some really brilliant ideas to change it at the minimum cost. On another matter, I find it regrettable that mature individuals elected into your positions are finding it necessary to bring a consultant in to try and educate, educate your group in the ways of professional performance. This may be somewhat of an affordable number, somewhat better than what I heard before between $12,000 and $15,000. But I don't think we need this expense at all, and as a taxpayer, I find it unfortunate that I take this call. I wonder actually if John, Counselor Coulson, if this discussion tonight with regards to additional dollars will affect your number of 149? I think you thought earlier...
Oh.
In a negative way. Anyway, thank you. Good to be back.
Good to have you back.
Further public participation. Mr. White?
I'd just like to thank whoever's responsible for finally correcting the mistake on the website. I don't know how old the website is, but it must be very shortly after the foundation of the municipality, and that was iconic, so well, it picked the foot last year when you go to the website, or the one that was looking down the news page, which else you haven't. And I know I brought that to council's attention and staff's attention, I don't know how many times over the years, and I noticed when I went to the website recently, it had been corrected, so thank you very much.
To give you a timeframe, my guess would be about 2008, roughly, because that's when there was a tourism grant, and there was some website upgrades at that time, but just to give you a time reference.
The CEO should think about that.
What's that?
We've got our CEO to think about that.
Cheryl, do you think he did it?
I don't think...
It was Bob?
No, okay.
There we go. Well, thank you. Any further public participation? Okay, hearing none, we need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So you?
Counselor Neary, Counselor Swain, all is in favor?